Call to order the meeting of Monday, November the 28th. And if the clerk would please take the roll.
Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Moller.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Mayor Rupp.
Here. You have before you the minutes from the regular meeting of November 14th. Do we have a motion to receive and file those minutes?
So moved.
Thank you. Mayor Protam, Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cole, is there any additions or deletions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the minutes will be as submitted. We have four presentations tonight. If the clerk would please read the first one.
Tom Navarro, project consultant, will present the city of Port Huron with the Silver Award from the Michigan Fitness Foundation's 2011 Promoting Active Communities Program.
If you'd just like to come up to the podium.
My name's Tom Navarro, and my purpose for being here this evening is to present an award to Mayor Rupp in the city of Port Huron from the Promoting Active Communities Program. This is part, as you just heard, of the Michigan Fitness Foundation, which plow under the umbrella of the Governor's Council on Physical Fitness. It's a prestigious award, and it's a result of a very comprehensive self-assessment that was completed by the city and community members. It was initiated by the Port Huron Housing Commission, which applied for and received a grant and funding for this self-assessment. The self-assessment examines the kinds of projects and improvements that the city has implemented to promote active lifestyles in our community, such as walking and biking. Specific examples include maintaining and adding sidewalks, creating bike paths, and on-street bike lanes. My role is to have a consultant and coordinator for the completion of the self-assessment. I'd like to recognize some members of the city who participated in the self-assessment. They include former city assessor Randy Fernandez, Kim Harmer, Dave Smith, and Nancy Winter. Once the self-assessment is completed, in return, different levels of awards are given depending on and which reflect their efforts in promoting active lifestyles. At this point, I'd like to read the awards letter which was sent to us. "The Michigan Fitness Foundation is pleased to announce that Port Huron has earned a Silver Award as part of the 2011 Promoting Active Communities Program. Port Huron is part of a growing movement throughout Michigan to create more active, livable, and economically viable communities, and has joined a network of 139 Michigan communities in 56 counties who have participated in the Promoting Active Communities Program and earned an award since the year 2000. The Promoting Active Communities Program is like no other in the country. By completing the online self-assessment and earning an award, Michigan communities are recognized for using innovative approaches to make it easier for residents to lead more active lifestyles through supportive programs, public policies, and community design. You are to be commended knowing for your efforts to complete the Promoting Active Communities Assessment, but also for helping Port Huron become more active and a healthy community. Each community is recognized for their efforts, receiving one of five award levels, and an honorable mention. Port Huron received, as you just heard, the Silver Award, which stands for communities who have achieved significant progress towards making it easy for people to be more active." So at this point, I'd like to bring up and give the award.
You can come down and present the award to Mayor Rupp. Well, thank you very much, on behalf of the city council. Just like to also thank Mr. Navarro.
He's a former school principal, and every building that he was at, he left his fingerprints on that in terms of physical fitness. In fact, the last school that he was at, Michigami, brought in a significant program for physical fitness, and his wife is a citizen of Port Huron as well, is always right involved in terms of writing of grants and such. So I'd like to thank him for being involved as a citizen of Port Huron.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention. And we will move on to presentation number two.
Teddy Samar, Chair of the McMinnan Civic Center Authority, will give a report on McMinnan's status.
I'm going to present to you tonight what is kind of like a final report on McMinnan Place from the McMinnan Civic Center Authority. And I call it a final report because three years ago, we were given 36 months, shorter, less if we needed less, and up to 36 months to determine and make a recommendation to the city council as to what plans should take place in order to move McMinnan forward. So if you'll allow, that's why this report may seem, I'm going to maybe present some information that many of you may know, but I don't know who in the audience may or may not know, or who may be watching at home on television. So if you'll just indulge me and bear with me. And also, some of you came to our donor reception in August, which we held at the theater for the Seeing Stars program, and those of you who are in attendance, Sarah, please ask you to bear with me because I'm recycling some of my opening comments. So this might be familiar. As a resident and homeowner and taxpayer in the city of Port Huron, I am what you would call a typical user of McMinnan Place. I don't often visit the civic center every week. I don't even use it every month necessarily during the calendar year. However, since I moved to Port Huron almost 20 years ago, I have cheered on the Border Cats, Beacons, Flags, and Ice Hawks hockey teams. I have applauded two of my friends as best friends, in fact, as they danced across the stage in the theater in the Nutcracker. I have dulled the blades of my own figure skates on the ice in both the junior and main arenas. I have listened intently to a variety of town hall speakers. I have applauded wildly for the children of friends and neighbors whom I've watched dance and perform in dance recitals and musical productions. And I have given a little whoop-whoop to my friends who play in the Old Man's Hockey League when I go and watch them on Tuesdays and Fridays and Sunday nights. And I've watched my boyfriend's niece three times attempt to become the next Miss Michigan USA in the theater. And if you go three times, you really love your boyfriend. I have danced at a company Christmas party in the McMinnan Lounge. I have decorated trees in the main arena for the Festival of Trees. I acquired a boyfriend once by attending open skating. Twice in the past three months, I have hosted parties for my very own business in the lounge. And finally, I have stood with my hand over my heart and listened to the Star Spangled Banner as it played in the theater prior to the showing of a feature-length film. And we've recently started those films again, and I just, I love doing that. I think that is so fun. And so, much more that I've done at McMinnan that I cannot begin to recall, much less share with you here today. And without a doubt, McMinnan has shaped the life I've lived in Port Huron, and I suspect that most residents of the Bluewater area share similar memories that have taken place in one of McMinnan's venues. I first gave this speech at a donor reception in August for the Seeing Stars fundraising program. Because approximately 10 years ago, a dedicated group of volunteers from this community endeavored to raise $1 million for the McMinnan Theater, and they succeeded in doing so in just a few short years. And sadly, it took us 10 years to thank them for that properly. Their willingness, though, to ask their family, friends, and neighbors to donate to McMinnan, and the outstanding response that they received from many in our community is proof positive that the citizens of this community, extending far beyond the borders of the Port Huron city limits, see value in McMinnan, and they are more than willing to write a personal check in order to back that support. And now, hold that thought for a moment, and I promise you, I will return to that in just a moment. And I hope that this actually will work for me here. Oh, there we go. Many of McMinnan event pictures. And what is McMinnan to this community? It is, of course, a multi-use athletic and entertainment facility. It is an economic driver, filling restaurants, bars, and hotel rooms across the county. It's a hub of activity for those of us who live here and work here. It is a part of the foundation of our quality of life in St. Clair County. Who owns and operates McMinnan? It is a city-owned facility. It was built with monies donated to the city of Port Huron by the McKenzie, McMinnan, and Murphy families. McMinnan was a gift to the city of Port Huron. Per an agreement with the city at the time of its construction, for the first 50 years, and then added on a few more per an agreement with the city council, an independent board of commissioners was fully responsible for the financial matters of this facility, meaning that that board did not report back to city council necessarily. The city of Port Huron has very generously budgeted an allocation for McMinnan's operation and its capital each year. And I want to make a note here, and this is really important to me, anyway, and I think to those of us who serve on the board, and I think to the residents in the community, people often refer to McMinnan's deficit. There really is no deficit. The city specifically chooses to budget monies for McMinnan every year. That doesn't mean that it's operating in deficit. In fact, the majority of the dollars, by far, come from events and activities that are taking place within the facility. Who owns and operates McMinnan? Again, second slide, in 2008, the city changed the board's Articles of Incorporation and appointed a new board that reports directly to city council, and that was a major change. Because actually, the board that I've served on for the last three years is fully accountable to you. The prior 50-some years was fully accountable, really, to itself. Just who are we, the McMinnan Civic Center Commissioners? Mark Rossett was our chair most of the last three years, and he accepted a position in another state and left in July, and Don Stoner resigned in July. So the last few months, we've had just a couple of open board seats, but we knew we were concluding our work, so we did not fill them. Cindy Lane, and as you'll note, those positions next to their names, when the new board was put into place three years ago, it couldn't just be members at large. It had, people had to fill those roles. They had to have some level of expertise. Mark was the general manager of the Dom Tare paper plant, and he's an engineer by profession, so he fulfilled this facility's role, and et cetera, et cetera. Our current general manager is Rob Churchill. Over the last three years, we've actually had three different general managers. Something that new that was added with this new board was we added a city council liaison who's a non-voting member. Lonnie Stevens first served in that role, and then Steve Miller most recently. We also added a non-voting position that we called the County Commissioner Liaison, and Jeff Bohm has been a very good member of our board and shown up, dedicated very faithfully to our meetings, and offered his input to what's going on at McMinnan. We felt that those positions were important because we wanted to have a greater communication with the city government, and also even with the county government, recognizing the fact that this facility serves the community at large. Our charge as a board, per the Articles of Incorporation, as they were changed three years ago, that we were incorporated for the purpose of basically taking care of the building and determining the best overall operating model for the use and benefit of the citizens the authority serves. And basically, what that means, the rationale for that was, this should help as we reach out regionally for support, per getting input from county commissioners and others outside of the city of Port Huron. There we go. Second part of our charge that was significant was that our authority would be 36 months in length, or until such time as we could determine the operating model and establish governance of the civic center, whichever came first. Took 36 months. And the rationale for that, the bottom line is that we were to determine a long-term operating and capital sustainability program for the building. Our accomplishments, what did we do the last three years? Primarily, they have focused on reducing operational costs. I'd like to extend great thanks to Kirk Kramer, who's Vice President of Administrative Services at SC4. He's served on our board very faithfully the last three years, and he had a great deal to do with that, especially in the early days of taking a look at how the budget was spent and making recommendations in terms of how we could make most efficient use of the dollars that we have. We have significantly reduced the city's annual operations allocation to McMinnan from $335,000 to just $118,000 since 2008. We did engage for one year in a joint operating agreement with a private company. It was actually arranged to be a three-year agreement, and after one year, both parties, it was, you could, after one year, either party or both parties could determine to leave it, and both parties agreed that it was best to disband that. Although I will say that I do believe, though it is difficult, it's like being married to anybody, you don't always agree on how you're going to spend money, I do think that people operating at McMinnan on a day-to-day basis learned a great deal from that experience in terms of how a private business operates versus how a public business operates. And maybe the two of them learned a lot in terms of how that could both best work together, partnership. We focused on increasing the usage of the facility, and therefore, increasing the revenue. We focused on being an economic driver for the community. And for a good example of this, though it's small, but I like it because it's something we can all identify with, this summer, for example, on a couple of Friday nights, Rob arranged for band and a beer tent out in front of the fountains, which had been fixed through the generosity of a local family. And he told me when I stopped by one night to listen to the music that, well, the Coney Place across the street had decided to stay open a couple hours later because there were people going in to eat hot dogs and coming in, and the guy was offering to bring them across the street so people could buy his hot dogs. That is very small, and it sounds insignificant in terms of hot dog eating in downtown Port Huron, but that's an example of how an event taking place at McMinnan directly affected. I'm sure it mattered to that. Obviously, he was making money, or he wouldn't have decided to stay open late that night. And that's obviously not big dollars, but it's an impact. We have, and the other thing we really focused on, again, I've said this now three times, I think, focused on establishing relationships with key leaders outside of the city of Port Huron. I think that we all recognized very early that the, we know that McMinnan is used by people, obviously, from outside of the city, and it's been important for us to develop relationships with municipal leaders from outside of the city in order to help better partner with them on projects in the future, and just help them get a better understanding of how McMinnan operates and how it is funded, and why it might be important for them to take a look at potentially even helping with that at some point in the future. Other activities, we reviewed various capital funding possibilities. We looked at the possibility of a countywide hotel tax, and as you know, that fund, we do have one, and it funds the Visitors and Convention Bureau. What we determined after looking at that, if you don't know, a hotel tax has to actually be approved. I mean, we have one, but to change it or alter it requires actually going all the way to Lansing and approval by the state government, and the climate wasn't right for that at the time we were looking at that. We didn't believe that we could get that passed. We looked at a possible recreational authority millage that would allow selected municipalities to participate instead of having a countywide millage. For example, the library has a countywide millage. This would allow us instead, and it's a state law vehicle, to choose selected communities, perhaps those directly surrounding Port Huron, so that maybe people who live in K-Pac who don't use the facility as much wouldn't end up paying for it. Rough numbers that we gathered at the time determined that a 1/4 mill levy could generate approximately $300,000 annually for McMinnan. That would have cost the average homeowner, based on that $100,000 homeowner use that you talk about, taxes, would have cost that homeowner approximately $12 a year. We met with municipal leaders from outside of the city of Port Huron. While they all voiced their personal support for McMinnan and the city of Port Huron, they did not believe that they could get support from their municipal boards and governments that would need to approve putting that millage on their individual community ballots. Current status. The current general manager, Rob Churchill, he has been adding entertainment options to fill the building since he took over during August and early, or July, in downtown Port Huron. He's been filling, excuse me, he's been filling the building and downtown Port Huron every weekend. For example, this past weekend, and I noted this myself because I went to Second City on Saturday night, there was a Falcons game, there was a high school hockey game, there was a wedding reception in the lounge, and of course, in the theater, there was the Second City on a comedy troupe. It is wonderful to come downtown on a Saturday night and see so much activity in our building. Our current status, to continue moving forward by filling the calendar with activities to generate revenue and increase dollars flowing into McMinnan, downtown Port Huron, and other businesses across the county, such as hotels, restaurants, and shops, to continue serving as an economic generator and boost the quality of life in our community. And I can't emphasize enough that when we talk about economic generators, really kind of two branches to that. There's the big economic generator, like, for example, a Miss Michigan pageant that brings people from all over the state or, you know, whatnot, to the community, and they fill up the hotels, and they fill up, you know, the eat, and the bars, and restaurants, and whatnot. But, you know, the local economic generator is also part of the quality of life, and that's like the hot dog guy who's excited because he got to stay open and make extra dollars on a Friday night because there was a band downtown at McMinnan. I think the local economic generator and quality of life are, go hand in hand. What funds our capital needs right now at McMinnan? Approximately 10 years ago, McMinnan received a one-time capital improvement grant of $2 million, and that was a federal grant. The grant dollars were, it was just, to be honest, that grant was given to McMinnan, it sat in an account, and it was to be used on an as-needed basis. Those grant dollars were prudently spent over the 10-years period of time, and in 2011, the last of those dollars were spent. The city of Port Huron has also provided some capital improvement budget of various, varying amounts every year. But I can't emphasize enough the importance that those grant dollars that we had in our coffers for the last decade have been tremendously important to McMinnan. Going back to our charge, we were charged with determining long-term operating and capital sustainability. What I will note to you is, the transition team that brought on our board, this is a quote from their report to the city council three years ago, they stated, "The facility is structurally in good condition, but in need of capital upgrades and improvements." And I believe that it is still in that condition. Our staff does an excellent job of keeping things up to date, saving money where they can, and doing, making personal and professional sacrifices along the way. Future needs at McMinnan, Rob has put together a list of capital repairs that are more immediate. He's put together lists of repairs that may be needed in the next one to three years, and also, that may be needed beyond that. On top of the actual dollars, and in addressing the whole idea of what to do about the dollars, what McMinnan needs is outside-of-the-box thinking. Traditionally, McMinnan has been viewed as a liability to the city because the city helps fund its operation. It needs to be viewed as a valuable community asset that can and does generate activity and revenue, both downtown and in the community at large. It needs to be viewed as valuable to those who live here as part of our quality of life. And when trying to attract economic development to our community, we have to show people that we have community assets, and that we are solidly committed to maintain them for all in the community to enjoy. For example, I don't know if any of you have ever been to Saskatchewan. I've had the pleasure of taking a train through Saskatchewan years ago, and if you go on the train, you go from town, and then, little town, really, and then you go for the middle of nowhere. There's just nothing there. And then there's another little town with maybe, these towns don't have much more than a depot and a gas station, perhaps. And the thing is, I can't imagine why a developer, and if I had grown up, when I did that in college, if I had grown up to become an economic developer, would I want to go back to Saskatchewan to bring in a company or a bunch of people to live and work there? Well, there's nothing there. That is my kind of attempt at a slightly humorous, we can't let McMinnan go in terms of, if we don't place value in our heads first, and we don't provide dollars to it, then we are not showing the rest of the world that we care about the assets that we already have, and that we're going to maintain them, and that we're going to take good care of them and anybody else who might want to come and help us in this community, or help us develop the community even further. So, our recommendation is to actually disband the current McMinnan authority and move forward using members of the city administration to oversee the facility. And to be honest, what our actual recommendation was, was to just disband the authority completely. And Bruce and I talked about that, and he talked with Gary Fletcher, our city attorney, and due to a number of legal issues, it can't actually officially be disbanded, but we can put other people in place, and members of the city administration can take on the board roles and oversee the facility. The city government and administration should embrace McMinnan as a valued asset within the community and work closely on a day-to-day basis with the staff to look for opportunities to improve and enhance the operations and entertainment and usage of McMinnan. Partnering, I just, I think there's a lot of opportunity for partnering with city departments in McMinnan that I don't know happens on a day-to-day basis right now, but I think there's just a tremendous amount of opportunity for that. We would like to continue citizen involvement through the establishment of a countywide community advisory group that focuses on two primary activities, fundraising and recreational, cultural, and entertainment activities. Recreational, cultural, and entertainment advisory group will partner with the Port Huron City Recreation Department and rec departments across the county to make better use of McMinnan and to meet the recreational needs. For example, you know, we have ice at McMinnan, and we have no ice skates for people to rent when they go ice skating. If we had kids, I know there's another facility in the community where kids can rent skates and go skating, but I know, for example, I'm from Marquette, I taught ice skating for the city of Marquette City Recreation Department and fostered kids learning to skate, which then excited them about playing hockey, which excited them about going to figure skating, enjoying those clubs, and better using the facility in the future. If we don't provide that environment, then it is not going to exist in the future. Partner with private organizations, both for-profit and nonprofit, to determine how McMinnan can better meet their needs, such as, for example, the YMCA, and they have a beautiful new facility, but maybe when they put together their wish list, there was something that they didn't get, and, you know, they couldn't afford to add to, maybe a big room like a junior arena, what would they want to use with something like that? Again, that goes back to outside-of-the-box thinking and how we might partner with other organizations within the community. For example, there's also going to be a new convention center in the community, and I know there's already been talk about how McMinnan might, I don't want to call it partner, but how the two might maybe work together to bring in entertainment using one facility or the other. Again, I think McMinnan has kind of been on an island, probably because of the structure of the first 50-some years of its existence. I think that the city councils of the past just let it be because it was operating just on its own, and I don't think that, and with all due respect to all of them, and I think McMinnan just kind of sat there and did its thing, but I'd really like to see a marriage of the two in a much more happy situation. And make recommendations, this group could also make recommendations to the fundraising advisory group to help determine where funds may be needed. The fundraising advisory group can address special project fundraising efforts, capital project fundraising efforts, grant research and grant application, and investigation of municipal funding availability, such as other, like, for example, I don't, I'm not familiar with how municipalities fund, how taxes works and whatnot, but there may be other opportunities for obtaining dollars. And this is where I tie in, as I promised, to my opening remarks. The people in this community do care about McMinnan, and they're willing to write personal checks. They did to the tune of $1 million a decade ago, and they want to see it succeed, but that is only part of the solution. The bottom line is, it does need money, and there's no simple solution to that problem. I'd like to extend a special thank you to the McMinnan Authority, or to the McMinnan Place staff for all their creativity. staff, for all their creativity, time, and energy spent cutting back and making both personal and professional sacrifices, some have taken cutbacks in pay and hours and whatnot, just in order to keep the place running. It has been greatly appreciated, and it has enabled the facility to run as a much leaner and meaner machine over the last three years. I'd also specifically like to thank the donors, probably most especially the Duffy-Cramer families, who paid for the fountain to be refurbished this year. That's the second time they've done that in the last decade, and their commitment to McMorn has been extensive. And I guess, just in closing, I would like to say, I'd like to provide a quote from anthropologist Margaret Mead, and I'm sure all of you are aware of it as public servants. "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has."
Thank you. Does anyone on council have questions for Patty?
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
I talked to Patty before the meeting here, and being involved with McMorn at many of their meetings, I think my biggest thing was the fact that, you know, if we dissolve the authority, are we still going to have the transparency that we have? And another thing I think that should be noted, I think it was about seven or eight years ago, the civics theater people went in and replaced the upholstery on many of the seats in the auditorium, and I think that was a great addition, but the transparency issue still is something that I think has to be addressed.
Yeah, and that's why we recommend that a community advisory board of some sort, and like, specifically, I think, the two issues, the fundraising, obviously, and then the use of the building, which is what the recreational, cultural, entertainment.
I thoroughly support that concept, so.
Good.
Is there anyone else on council?
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
Patty, if in three years the McMorn Authority was able to reduce McMorn, the city subsidy from 335,000 to 118,000, why, then, are you suggesting giving it back to the control of the city rather than maybe renewing that three-year term or extending that term for the McMorn Authority?
I think, well, what we struggled with most was coming up with capital funding. I mean, right now, I mean, Rob does an excellent job of making sure that the ice is, you know, hard and cold, and it, you know, we just replaced a compressor, for example, for $30,000. If the other one goes, we're going to be looking at you for help replacing the compressor. It feels like we're kind of out there, like I said earlier, on an island by ourselves. I think that, to be honest, what our actual thought was, we wanted to hand the keys to the city manager and ask him to embrace McMorn as perhaps part of a department or whatnot, but because it needs to, because of the legal issues revolving around the board, and having to have a commission, and I think part of that has to do with liquor licenses and on and on and on, he determined that city administrators could, you know, other department heads could operate it instead. I think that the city needs to take greater ownership. That's really what we wanted to see happen, you know, not just you as a council, but, you know, throughout this building.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Patty?
More of a statement, I guess.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Three years ago, when we put this board together, it was not my intention to see it dissolve. In three years, it was to see it move forward. They've done some good things. I think you have to have a board because I don't want to vote every time. They got to spend $5,000, and that's what's going to happen if you don't have a commission board.
No, that's not true. The board will exist. It would be, Bruce, correct me if I'm I was going to have you, and, I mean, Gary Fletcher, and...
John.
Ogden.
Julie Davis.
Right.
Basically.
So, there still will be a board. It just won't be outside, of outside citizens. We're handing the fiscal responsibility to the city administration is really what we're doing. And then a citizens' community advisory board would provide citizen input into how the building might be used, and to help with the fundraising.
Oh, that's exactly the opposite of what I had envisioned when we did this three years ago, so I will not be supporting that, and I can tell you that now.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions for Patty? I guess I would just ask, what is the intention now of, maybe you can address this, Bruce, are you going to bring a plan forward to us as to what you...
Well, I think the city has been pretty much detached from this facility for 60 years, and we really aren't, don't have our arms around its operation. We don't really aren't involved in the financial activities related thereto, and I think what I would like to see us do is two or three of us take some time and just understand what this operation is, and try to put together, I think there's probably seven, eight, or nine obvious kinds of things that could be done to this facility, and settle on one, bring it to the city council, and move forward. As I've indicated a number of times, I've gone back 14 years and looked at newspaper articles about Port Huron, and for 14 years, this has been an issue that everybody says we got to do something about it, and nothing has been done about it, at least satisfactory to the city council, I guess. And so, my recommendation would be let us do a little reconnaissance and try to understand the issues, bring those back to you, and see where you'd like to go with it.
When do you think that that would be? Because if their commission expires at the end of December, we don't have a lot of time.
Well, I don't think it's going to take much more than a month to figure out what's going on there. Is it making money, losing money? I've heard stories about condition of some of the facilities. What are the high, high priority? What have we got to do? I mean, if there's an ice machine that's broken, or an air conditioner, or whatever the case might be, those are things that need to be addressed, and I think we need to understand what they are. We don't at this point.
Right. I think what I really, I don't expect to have everybody agree with what our board recommended, but I'm, I think what saddens me more than anything is to hear that I don't, like I said, I think McMorn's just sat out there on an island. I feel for Rob many days, that he's on an island, kind of, all by himself, doesn't know even a lot of people in City Hall, because he's not necessarily a department head, he's not invited. I'm sure there are department head meetings, like within any organization, and he's just kind of out there with a limited staff. In fact, almost half the staff we had three years ago, we do cutbacks and whatnot, which has been good, and it's running as a lean, mean machine. But I think, again, people, throughout this community, it's not you, it's, everybody looks at it like it's this big liability, when it's a huge asset. It brings things downtown, it brings people downtown, it brings dollars into the community. It's not perfect by any means, but it needs, it's been band-aided in a very nice, well-taken-care way, but it's 50-plus years old. I mean, if you, if you think that that's too old, and it would cost too much to refurbish it, to make it more energy-efficient and whatnot, then decide to knock it down and do, you know, do something else with the space. I mean, I don't want to see that happen, but if that, I mean, I would rather see that happen than see it fall down brick by brick. I'd like to ask you, I plead of you, to please look at it from a different standpoint. Put it in a different place in your mind than just this line item on the budget that's costing you $118,000 a year, which is a drop in the bucket to a city of this size. As a taxpayer here, I am thrilled we have a facility like that. I mean, like I said, to come downtown Saturday night and see the whole building filled, and the parking lots filled, and people walking around, I mean, it was, I don't know what else brings people to downtown that way if it's not there.
I think there's a huge community pride about that building. I think it's very much a part of the fabric of this community. I don't see us, us suggesting mothballing or selling to someone who might emasculate the facility. I don't see us, I see us trying to find a way through this many years of ideas and suggestions, and nothing seems to have really gelled, and maybe a fresh look at that, and it's a wonderful facility. It's designed by Alden Dow, who's a world-famous architect, and...
I don't know how many of you are actually from Port Huron, born and raised here, or lived here most of your life, but I am not, and I remember the very first time I came to Port Huron was 1987. I came for a friend's wedding, and we went to the rehearsal, which was out at some country club somewhere, and we walked down Huron Boulevard from the old, was it the old hack, I guess, in the Algonquin Hotel, and I hadn't been through downtown. And this was like a Friday night, and it was a warm summer evening, and we walked down the street, and all of a sudden, there was this sculpture, and it was lit up, and the fountain was going, and I was just stunned. I'm just this little gal from the U.P., and I thought Port Huron was the coolest city. When I had the opportunity to move here, just a few short years later, within five years, I took it, because that building was in my mind, and just how, I thought, wow, that is a happening place. Well, that was almost 20 years ago, and I still love that building. I mean, I fell in love with the building probably on the spot right there. But it, people come here and they see it, and, I mean, we are just, we look at it and think, oh, it's just McMorn. But it is something special to someone who's never been here before. And when you go in, and all the people come for the Miss Michigan, USA thing, I mean, I kind of teased about that because it is a long page, if you've never sat through it. But, you know, you think, people come from all over the U.P. My boyfriend's niece is from Nagone, Michigan, and she was so excited to come to the big city of Port Huron. I'm not making that up, because she was going to get to be in this contest here, and her whole family came, you know? It is a piece of this community that's important, and I guess I don't understand the community mindset that it's something to be pushed aside and sigh over how much it costs us.
Can I ask you, how much, you have one vacancy on your board, how much board participation, two vacancies?
Two vacancies.
Do you have board participation, is it waning in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then I have a legal question, I guess, if I could ask. If, in fact, the board expires at the end of December, and nothing else is put in its place, prior to that, what happens?
It's a city asset, and it's controlled by the city.
But what happens to all of their, I understand that some...
The legal issues could come into play. It could affect your liquor license you have, and I'm not familiar with all the other issues that my partner cited, but I believe there are other issues as well that would, would have to be addressed.
So, we don't have more than a couple weeks to really basically come up with something?
You would definitely be better off addressing this with a, you know, if you're going to continue the current structure, fine, or amending the Articles of Incorporation so that you can put a new structure in place, if that's the way you want to go. But yes, you definitely should address this before the end of the year.
Before the end of December.
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
We always have the option of extending it for four to six months, whatever we want to, till we can get our hands around it.
Well, that's what I was kind of getting at. Do we need to do three months or something like that in order to have the transition take place? Because I think that it's going to require more than a couple weeks of...
I don't think you're going to get it done in a week.
Of research.
Mayor Rep?
I have a question before you do that.
Yes.
If we leave this in place, really, all you're asking to do is replace the existing McMorn Authority members by our staff. So, it's already in place anyway.
Right. But we'd need to do that before the end of the month.
We would need to replace the members before the end of the month, or ask the current members to extend their term, not, we're not extending the authority, we're extending the term of the people sitting there, correct?
I believe the Articles of Incorporation have a specific method of selecting the members, so if you're going to use a different method to select commission members, then you would have to amend the Articles of Incorporation.
Correct. I guess I would ask what your thoughts are on that, Bruce, as far as...
I'm willing to do anything. There are people that are on that group that are as dedicated as Patty is. There are people that are in that group that rarely come to meetings, and so there needs to be, if you want to combine City Hall administration and the existing, there needs to be a dramatic overhaul, I think, of how we look at it.
I think the previous board, and I don't, I don't know much about it because I didn't sit on it, but I don't believe that there were specific roles that people were supposed to play. It was more of a member-at-large commission as a whole. And I think that it was felt when they looked at, when the transition team looked at what needed to be done and to move it forward in the future, they decided that maybe the prior board was lacking in certain areas expertise. So, they, that's why they dedicated a position for facilities, a position for legal, a position for HR, and that was all, I understand the thought process behind that, I do, and I embraced it at the time as well. The trouble is, that's very restricting in terms of getting people who, I mean, I'm a member, there are two members, members-at-large, and I'm a member-at-large. I'm an artist. I am not a financial person, but I have a passion for, obviously, as I just spoke of, the structure, Alden Dow, the sculptures out front, et cetera. But to find, I mean, Mark Bissett was a very dedicated member as a facilities manager. But the other people who fall into some of the, we have, for example, a stakeholder who's from one of the organizations that use, all of them aren't, they're doing it because somebody asked them to sit on this board, not because they're passionate about the building or the community. They're fulfilling some kind of, you know, and they show up for some of the meetings. I'll be on, you know, not a lot of conversation. It's been a struggle. I would rather see you have, find people who are passionate about the building and wanting to help and jump in and do something with it.
Yes, Councilmember Mohler.
One of the reasons we went to the specific positions is because the prior boards for 50 years, when you left the council, you went to the McMorn Authority, or if you left the County Board of Commissioners, you went to the McMorn Authority. It was who's who of Port Huron in the past, and Alan's shaking his head, and him and I were both here, and that's why we went to the specific positions, because the who's who didn't have their heart into it, and that's why we went to specific things. I don't want to go back to the who's who of Port Huron.
I wouldn't like to see that either.
And I have to agree with Alan. Also, I think on page three of your highlights there, the last slide, our activities, the last comment that you make there, there's no strong support from municipal leaders outside the city of Port Huron. If we let the city administration take this over, we'll have less support from the communities outside of Port Huron. That's not what we're striving for.
You believe that the city administration here will have less support for McMorn than people in the surrounding communities? Well, that's just sad.
Did you have something?
I agree, sad, that's true.
Just to add to what Councilmember Mohler said, we also put those people in that place because of the specific abilities that they had to come up with ways to help McMorn have a future. There was reasons why we had a facilities person. We want someone to go in and tell us that it's not going to fall down in a week, and that's what they came back and told us, is the building is structurally sound. It's the inside parts that need to be fixed. That's why we put a loiter on there that could go through and go through all the legal documents, and that's why we put, you know, the HR person on there so we could go through and change. That's why you see probably some of the reduction in the deficit is because you have those people on there. Now, if people aren't showing up, that's a problem, and that needs to be corrected, and you need to kick those people off the board.
I think that those, the reduction in the expenses can probably primarily be attributed to a couple of dedicated board members and the general managers who have sat in the general manager's chair.
The appointments are council appointments, is that correct? I'm sure they are.
Mm-hmm.
Which means it's up to us to kick them off, not...
Don't have a problem. If people aren't showing up, kick them off. It's that simple. If you sign up to be on that board, then you need to go to the dang meetings.
I mean, Ken Harris, who was not even a member, he went to more meetings than any of us, I'm quite sure.
Well, that's sad.
What does it say, Mr. Shoney? He's dying to tell us.
Yeah. He's ready to...
I think it's addressed by Article Five of the Articles of Incorporation. I don't know if anyone has a copy of these, but...
I don't have them.
Says, "The authority shall be directed and governed by a board of seven commissioners, known as the commission, each to be elected by the city council or the city of Port Huron. No member of which may be a member of the authority commission." So, basically, you pick.
Pick seven people.
I do believe there is also a provision that addresses like a stakeholder-selected position, that's, I think there's the five largest contract holders, select one person themselves. So, that's basically the procedure. And if you're going to change that, and you're not going to have dedicated individuals, then you probably have to amend your Articles of Incorporation if you're going to go to a different structure.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
Is there a reason we couldn't do a hybrid of the two, where we would have the McMorn Authority with the select members, and then the city administration be members as well, as opposed to doing away with one for the other?
No, there's no legal reason you couldn't do it that way. You just have to amend the Articles of Incorporation.
To at least, you could do something like that, to at least bide some time until we figure out what there is that you're going to do or if there's anybody of any interest that wants to continue. Because if you do not have the participation at the board meetings, obviously, it's very frustrating for you, I would expect. And it's not going to go anywhere if in fact, that's the case.
Right.
So you've got, and you already have two vacancies.
Yes. We do currently, with existing members, we have, we do have a quorum. We have four people remaining, five people remaining, but-
Mayor Rep?
If some, yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
If I understood it right, it wasn't, the two vacancies weren't filled because of, they didn't want to fill them. It was just because of when they became vacant, they didn't feel like filling them before the term ended.
Well, we knew the term was about to expire.
Right.
We'd already begun discussion of taking this path, so it was determined-
Not to fill those?
So we could. But there, those two positions are very specific. One is a facilities manager and one is an HR person.
And no one has expressed, expressed an interest, I take it?
I don't think people are aware those positions have been available. It hasn't, it's not like we publicized that. I mean, it's on the city website, but I doubt people go looking for positions on the McMorn Authority.
And how does the rest of the, obviously, you're making a recommendation that it be disbanded. So how do the, do all, is that a unanimous decision amongst the rest of the board members? They really don't want to continue?
That is my understanding, yes.
So really, you're talking about a whole new board, no matter which way you look at it?
One way or another.
One way or the other. Which means, I guess, at this point, I think we, obviously, I mean, I would hope that the city manager would come back with some kind of a recommendation at the next council meeting because we're going to have to do something. And if it's a hybrid, maybe there's a couple of the board members that want to, yourself maybe, or somebody else, kind of with city administration, at least see what there is there and what needs to be done for the future. We could certainly change the Articles.
I think that would be, that would be a really good, the hybrid idea is a good idea in that, I mean, we've had a city council liaison, which has been helpful. But, I mean, all of you are basically in some form or another volunteers too. I mean, you know a lot more about what goes, how city government operates than the rest of us in the community do. But I think even having someone more entrenched in it, and it's, that's their day-to-day job alongside of, you know, volunteer citizens like myself would be extremely helpful, especially when it comes to the, what, what are the opportunities for funding for the, I mean, I don't sit in City Hall every day. I don't know what kinds of, I, I have worked in a granting office before at a university, so I know there are grant dollars available, but that's not my job anymore. So I, you know, unless I want to spend 20 hours of my week searching the federal register, which I have done at some point in my life, I, you know, I don't, your help or the City Hall's help would be tremendously helpful with McMorn and, and helping plot a fin, good financial future for it.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
You know, the one thing I noticed with McMorn Authority, they, they didn't lack enthusiasm when they got on the board. I think the enthusiasm they got with the job kind of wore on after a while because some of them were lawyers, some of them were judges, and it made it difficult for attendance. And how do you create enthusiasm? I mean, she's got, she had, they, they had some good ideas, she's got some good ideas, but you can't buy enthusiasm.
No, that's true. That's true. Anyone else? Or, I guess, can we ask you to at least look into that possibility and see-
Why don't you let Patty and I have a chance to sit down and talk about a model that might work? I can assure you, we don't need another department and I don't need another job long-term. But I think that between her efforts and our efforts, we might be able to find a way through this. And we'll come back to it at a future meeting with-
Well, I don't think we have much choice but the next meeting.
Yeah.
Because I, I believe in our, tonight, we are going to change the second meeting of the month. And I'm not so sure it's going to end up being the date it sets. So anyways, that being said, I don't think it's something we can just let it go because it expires at the end of the month. So we really need to address it, one way or the other.
All right. Well, then I will meet with Bruce.
But thank you for your presentation and for your dedication and enthusiasm.
Thank you.
Presentation number three.
Dan Casey, Executive Director, Director of the Economic Development Alliance, will give a presentation on the I-69 corridor program.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, and Mr. Brown. Good evening. Are you getting my, oh, there it is. Okay, great. I'm here this evening to talk about an opportunity for the city of Port Huron to participate in a five-county, multi-community initiative called the I-69 International Trade Corridor. Before I talk a little bit in, in depth about what that means, I wanted to kind of give you a brief overview of the opportunity around I-69 and the logistics assets that exist there today. And this really began when President Obama took office and he stated a goal to double exports in the United States, or from the United States over a five-year period. When Governor Snyder took office at the beginning of the year, he kind of reiterated that goal because Michigan has a lot at stake in the logistics sector. Obviously, we border Canada. Canada is the United States' largest trading partner. Actually, if you, if, if Michigan were a country, we would be one of the, I think, the fourth-largest trading partner for Canada. That's how significant the amount of trade is. It takes place, place between Canada and Michigan and Canada and the United States. So that created an opportunity and an economic development program that was implemented at the beginning, or really, the beginning of this year. It was approved by the state legislature at the end of last year. Also on this slide, I'll just mention there are some other initiatives that have been underway that relate to logistics and taking advantage of trade between Canada and Michigan. One of those that has been in the news and everyone is familiar with is the discussion around the international bridge in Detroit. And the reason that that's come about is Michigan and Windsor and Ontario trying to position themselves to take advantage of additional trade in the future. So much of that debate is, is really been about, you know, current traffic and, and current usage of the bridge. Well, really, the purpose is of that project is to take advantage of the trade that's going to come in the future, not necessarily just what's here today, although that's clearly important. So I-69 is a NAFTA corridor. It's also been deemed by MDOT to be a corridor of economic significance. And there are many reasons for that. I'm going to show you a slide in a minute that will highlight it. But basically, you look at the assets that exist along the corridor today. You have an expressway system that connects three countries effectively, Mexico, the US, and Canada. It has rail access that connects all three countries, that borders the, the corridor, the, its entire route. We have foreign trade zones. We have other programs in place, educational programs that can help train people to work in, in that industry, in the logistics field, or in related manufacturing. Here, this is one of the slides that demonstrates what I'm talking about. If you look at the, the left slide, for example, it shows port traffic, if you will, on-water traffic coming into Port Halifax, going down the Sault Ste., or the Sault Ste. Marie portal and St. Lawrence Seaway, I'm sorry. If you look at the right map, it shows the, the rail corridor, the CN rail line that goes from the east coast of Halifax to London, where it splits and goes south into Michigan. And as it goes west, it connects Port Rupert on the west coast. And then, of course, I-69 and the rail line both go south all the way to Mexico. What's significance about, I think about this is both Port Rupert and Port Halifax. I know they're in Canada and, and why are we talking about that in Michigan? But there's really an opportunity that's coming in 2014. That's when super freighters hit the water for the first time. And these super freighters are significantly larger than the existing ocean-going transport vessels today. In fact, they're so large that they can handle 16 ships' worth of cargo on one of these new ships. When they hit the water in 2014 on the east coast, there are currently only two ports that can handle the ships of these size, of this size. And so this creates a great opportunity for Port Halifax, the community there, and any of the logistics assets or the communities that are engaged in logistics to really grow their tax base and their jobs in that area. On the west coast, for example, Port Rupert is the closest west coast port to Asia. On the east coast, Port Halifax is the closest port to Europe. So you see a great opportunity. In logistics, time is money. So the shorter amount of time they're on the water, or the shorter amount of time that cargo's on rail or on the expressway system, the more money that the shippers make and the more money that companies that are shipping these goods save. So location is critically important. And Michigan has this narrow window of opportunity to try to take advantage of this. We're in partnership right now with the Port Authority in Halifax, with Nova Scotia, and with other organizations in Ontario that are looking at developing an economic development plan and a model where we jointly come together and market our assets and create a global supply system that we can market to important places in Asia and Europe. We've had two meetings in the past six months, two workshops, if you will, one in Nova Scotia and the other one just a couple of months ago in Lansing, where we brought together all of these various parties. And we've talked about the issues that surround trying to develop this model and what it's going to take. The I-69 International Trade Corridor is a spinoff of that effort. Okay, I talked about this. This shows you the, the distance, for example, from Port Rupert to Asia. So it's 4,642 miles. Here's another one that, that, that shows Michigan's proximity in, in this global system. And most people would think, you know, Michigan's a peninsula, you know, it's not, you know, at the center of anything. I mean, Chicago was, and Kansas City, places like that are more central than Michigan. But when you look at it in terms of a global market, both the Canadian and the US markets combined, Michigan becomes much more centrally prominent. And then the east map shows the expressway system in Michigan and how it connects the ports in Sault Ste. Marie, rather, the border crossing in Sault Ste. Marie to the one in Detroit and the one in Port Huron. So getting back to the legislation that was passed at the end of December last year and signed into law by the governor, it was called the Next Michigan Development Act, which allows regional partnerships of communities to come together to create what's called a Next Michigan Development Corporation. The law allows the state of Michigan to create up to five of these logistics hubs in Michigan. The first of these was approved early this year, and that is the Aerotropolis in Detroit, which basically combines land situated around Metro Detroit Airport and Willa Run Airport, as well as land in between them. And they've established a corporation, they've gone through the approval process and were approved. So they are now marketing the Aerotropolis, and I'm sure you've all heard that name mentioned in the news at some point. So you know that they're out there actively marketing that for economic development purposes. The state has been accepting applications ever since that first one was approved, but they're not allowed to establish more than two per year. So they put out a request for a notice of intent early this summer statewide. And they asked communities or regional organizations to come together and to submit a notice of intent if they were interested in applying for one of these remaining four designations. By the way, one of the designations has to be in the UP. So there's really three remaining in the, for the rest of Michigan. So what that resulted in is, is numerous regions coming together, doing collaborative things like we're proposing this evening. Places like Grand Rapids, Lansing, Traverse City, Kalamazoo have all expressed interest or are in the process of pursuing an application. So in a sense, we're in a race against other regions because they can only establish three more in this portion of Michigan. The Michigan Economic Development Corporation is sort of essential in this process. They've been guiding us every step of the way. They really like the I-69 corridor and the collaborative approach that we're taking. In fact, they've told us, they've all but guaranteed us that if we go through the application process and complete the process according to law, that we're, we're going to get a designation. But there's no guarantee and it is a race. So we've already lost the first leg of the race because Lansing's already submitted their application. Once they submit an application, the state has to act on it. So we expect that the second designation will be approved for Lansing. That puts us in, kind of in front and center for consideration for the beginning of next year. So a logistics hub or, or these regional logistics hubs, what does that mean? Well, it's, it's a regional effort that is centered around existing logistic assets. Companies that use those assets are required to use at least two types of multimodal transportation in their daily business. So you're talking about expressway and air, or expressway and rail, or port and rail, and some combination thereof. That's important as we talk about what type of companies would be recruited to locate in this area and which ones would be eligible for the specific incentives that the legislation put in place. Well, it would be companies that fit that definition that use at least two of those types of multimodal assets. To be eligible for an application, you have to have at least one county that signs on and you have to have at least one municipality. In our partnership, we have five counties and as many as 23 municipalities currently and possibly more than that by the time we're done with our process. The key step in all of this is that these communities and these counties have to sign an interlocal agreement. And the interlocal agreement is, which you're probably familiar with these, is a document that defines what the, what the entity is and the role that all of its members play through that, that process or through the development of the corporation. The interlocal agreement, once it's signed by the communities, has to be submitted to the Attorney General's Office, who makes a recommendation to the governor, and the governor has to approve it. And once he does that, then we're authorized to submit our application to the state. So that's the, the process that we're on right now. The, in order to meet the, the deadline that the Michigan Economic Development Corporation has given us, we have to complete this process around the middle of December. In other words, the communities that are interested and willing to sign the agreement have to pass a resolution agreeing to do so. And then we get a certified copy of the resolution, put them all together, and submit them to the Attorney General. So the next step, once, let's say we get this approved and we now have a corporation, what does that mean? Well, the next step is, is all the things that you do when you establish a typical authority, like a brownfield authority, DDA authority, local development, finance authority. It works the same way. It's a public entity. They have bylaws. All of the communities that sign the interlocal agreement make up the corporation. They get one seat on the board each. This is just a map that highlights the five counties that are partnering on this, starting to the west with Chiauasi County, Genesee County, Lapeer, St. Clair, and Oakland County. And all of the communities within these counties, if I can get this thing to advance, there it goes. Here you go. This breaks down the number of municipalities that have expressed some interest so far by county. And, and you would see that, if you look at this closely, that St. Clair has about six communities that are interested. Genesee has six, Chiauasi has six, and Lapeer four, and Oakland County has one currently. Now, that's not to say that they've all approved it, but they're all going through the process to consider it for adoption. And currently, we have about nine communities or counties that have approved the interlocal agreement. There are about six in, in Genesee County, including the county. We have four in Lapeer County, four villages or townships or cities that have approved it, and Lapeer County is considering it. Chiauasi, none of the communities there have acted on it yet. And in St. Clair County, I'm still doing presentations, but we have several communities expected to vote on the interlocal agreement right around the first week of December, between the first and the second week. So it's moving along at a pretty good clip. This is a pretty busy slide, so I'm just going to have you focus on the right side, if you will, of the slide, which the left side really talks about, you know, the general powers, what is it? The right side, though, is really the key thing because it talks about what is it? And what is the role of the corporation board? Well, what the entity is, is it's a large marketing effort. All of these communities and counties are going to be working together to market the I-69 corridor and areas within our communities that we have designated that we want marketed, or that we want developed, or redeveloped. or that we want developed or redeveloped. And in some cases, we have some rural communities located right on I-69 that don't have industrial parks, or they don't have water and sewer or roads that are close enough to the land to develop it. So the corporation, one of the things they can do is they can issue bonds and they can put that infrastructure in place. Some of the key components of this effort, which are in the law, are a requirement to have a streamlined permitting process, to have a master design plan, to have some design standards that all the communities agree to in advance. They come back to the communities as recommendations once they're established. So, for example, a master design plan, what that is, is that takes all of the pieces of land or the existing parks, industrial parks, that communities want to include in the territory. And it creates a master design plan across all five counties and all the communities that have signed the interlocal agreement. And it's kind of like your master plan. It says, this is what we plan to develop, and this is where it's going to be developed, based on what you tell us. Once it's done, it comes back to the community, you compare it to your master plan, and then you approve it. You could, through that process, if you chose to, make adjustments to your master plan if you felt the need to, but you're not required to. Design standards is another example. You have, in this community today, you have some existing certified business parks. We're going to use the same standard for a certified business park as our design standards for any industrial park that gets developed along the corridor, because that's kind of an umbrella standard that's used across the state of Michigan. So it's easy one for everybody to understand and adopt. One of the advantages of a community participating in this program is they bring together a lot of existing incentives, incentive programs, some of which your community can take advantage of today, and some of which you probably can't take advantage of with certain exceptions. One good example of that is Renaissance Zones. There's a formula in the law that says, based on the number of counties that sign the interlocal agreement, you can get up to 12 what they call Renaissance Zone areas. And most of these communities, by the way, aren't eligible for Renaissance Zones today. So this could be attractive to them if they're willing to forego taxes in order to get jobs. It just depends on what the community's goals are. But this does provide up to 12 Renaissance Zone areas. I have to be careful with that because an area doesn't mean that the businesses located there get all their taxes exempted. That's not what it means. It only means going forward, eligible businesses could be approved potentially for Renaissance Zone benefits, but they still have to get approved at the local level and they still have to get it approved at the state level. So what this does is this establishes where those areas are across the five counties so that we can market them. So let's talk a little bit about what are the corporate limitations of the Next Michigan Development Corporation. First is, local control is maintained every step of the way through this process and at the corporate level. And it's done so in many ways. But first, the corporation board is made up of all the local municipalities that signed the agreement. You are the people that vote on the decisions that are made by the corporation board. Secondly, all the communities have veto power over any action that the corporation board takes, and there are no exceptions. So the corporation decides, they attract a company and they decide, we're going to try to put them in Port Huron on a piece of property, four-acre piece of property in the industrial park, and we've decided we're going to give them a tax abatement. Once they make that decision, it comes back to your city council and you can veto it. If you don't like the project, or you don't want to give them the incentive, you say no, and they don't get the incentive. They may still locate on your four acres and they may not, but nonetheless, you at least have that power to decide whether or not you retain that power to make that decision. Communities also can leave the corporation with six months' notice if you want. Let's say you don't feel like you're getting any value out or not enough value, you have the opportunity to leave at any time. The corporation board has no powers of eminent domain. I know that that's been discussed at the county level. There is nothing in the law that grants the corporation board any powers of eminent domain. That is all retained at the local level. Communities can do it if you want. It can't be for an economic development purpose anymore as of five years ago. It has to be for public infrastructure. But nonetheless, the corporation board cannot do that. The corporation board also cannot levy a tax. They can bond for projects, however, cities are not held to those bonds. In other words, the bonds are only corporation bonds. None of the municipalities are impacted. It won't impact your bond rating and so forth. The authority has no ability to expand the multimodal system. That authority rests with either the private owners of rail lines or the port authorities or whatever the case may be. But they're typically either public or private entities, but they are not subject to corporation rules or the legislation. So the corporation cannot expand I-69, for example. They can't add another rail line. They can't add another border crossing and so forth. They can, however, accept gifts from municipalities or other organizations. They can go after grants and pursue those to support their activities and so forth. Also, the state has made no formal commitment of any kind of funding to its corporations that get established into this program. That's not to say that there might not be some funds made available in the future, but at this current time, there is no funding available for corporations. So just to wrap up then, a little bit more detail on the local control. The Next Michigan Development Corporation, the board, it manages its own activities. It can hire a CEO, it can hire personnel, it can develop marketing plans, it can travel, it can do all of those things, it can apply for grants and administer grants, and it manages, obviously, its own activities. It markets the entire territory of the communities that choose to participate. It approves incentives for eligible projects, and as I mentioned, it seeks grants and other kinds of funding. Local municipalities, local municipalities to participate provide a small annual fee. I'll get into that in a little bit more detail in a minute. Communities have the ability to deny incentives for projects or deny any kind of plan or proposal that the corporation puts forward if they choose to. And importantly, communities can still approve incentives on your own. That hasn't been taken away, so if there's a project you want to put it in the territory that's being marketed, you can do it. So the fee structure. We had to have some initial operating funds for the corporation. In the Aerotropolis, just to give you a frame of reference, communities there contributed $50,000 a year. That's what, when they signed the interlocal agreement, that's what they were agreeing to. And of course, they hired a director through Wayne County and other things, and they have other staff people. So that's how they initially funded it. We knew, however, that our communities couldn't afford anything close to that. So we've come up with a little different model for the first couple of years. And what we're requesting in Saint Clair County, well, actually, let me back up. We made the decision that the county, and I don't mean county government, but I mean the county as a whole, all of its entities that choose to participate in this program collectively have to come up with $10,000. And that can come from a number of different players. It could be foundations participating and others, but, so basically, our county, Saint Clair, has to come up with $10,000 to participate. So what we're choosing to do is to ask the cities to pay $1,000 annually, $1,000 annually. Townships and villages would pay $500 annually. And then we can have non-participating communities, in other words, those that don't sign the agreement but want to participate and benefit from the marketing, they can pay, basically they pay half that much. And then the balance, whatever is required to complete our obligation of $10,000 would be paid for by the county's government. So where we are today, we've got about six communities that are strongly interested or at least considering this. That would come up with $4,500, and the county would pay the balance of it. Now, the EDA is not off the hook, by the way, in any of this. There's an economic development organization like ours in each one of the counties, and we're the ones that are kind of working this through, doing all the detailed work, taking it to the communities, getting the interlocal approval and so on. We're all committing to continue to participate in this effort and provide funding for it for the foreseeable future. We're going to do that in a number of ways. For one thing, we're going to participate in the management of the corporation's activities. We're going to provide staffing for that. It's all-in-kind in that case. We're going to be contributing to the marketing budget, and we're going to be doing a lot of the travel. So our normal travel, when we go wherever we go in the U.S. or even around the world, we're going to be marketing the I-69 corridor as a part of our regular activity. Of course, we're going to be focusing on Saint Clair County and Port Huron, but we're also going to be marketing the whole corridor as a corridor of great significance. It's a great asset, obviously, for Michigan because it connects those three markets that I talked about earlier. So this is how the fee structure works. There will be additional grants and other things. We anticipate getting some funding from the Mott Foundation. They're big supporters in Genesee County. They share the same building with the Genesee Regional Chamber. This fits very nicely with their economic development strategy. So we're anticipating getting some funding from them, and there's other organizations like Kellogg Foundation that we're also going to be approaching. So benefits to local municipalities, this whole thing is about jobs and creating tax base. So we're trying to fill existing buildings, we're trying to help get some older buildings rehab, and trying to encourage new construction in the areas that the communities identify, that they want us to focus on. We can have up to 1,675 acres of Renaissance Zones areas among the five counties. There's a limitation of, I think it's 200 or 225 acres per county that we potentially could have. We're going to be taking advantage of some existing educational programming that's been developed by Mott Community College and Saint Clair Community College to teach our existing companies how to be good exporters, and so teaching them basically import and export readiness, doing assessments and so forth. In fact, we've got some of that training going on right now. And we're going to be expanding that as we go along. So part of it is to help educate our existing companies on how to be better players on the world stage in terms of global trade and exporting. And of course, we're going to be collectively, as a region, branding ourselves, which will help to make us more competitive with Chicago and Toronto and some of the other places that are logistics centers today. I guess I'll skip that slide, and that's it for now. I've given you the timeline. Administration has the interlocal agreement, and as I said, we have got about 10 communities, I think currently, that have agreed to sign it, and we're continuing over the next two to two and a half weeks to get the rest of the communities to sign it. Lastly, I would just tell you who the six are in Saint Clair County. It's, well, Port Huron, of course, we're here tonight, Marysville and the city of Saint Clair, Saint Clair Township, Kimball Township, and the village of Capek. So those are the communities, and of course, the county is also interested and will be voting on this around, I think, December 5th. So with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Yes, Councilmember.
One thing I noticed in your PowerPoint presentation, that Bishop Airport has been designated as the hub. Was there any competitiveness to deciding what the hub was? You know, we have Saint Clair County, we have Lansing, we have facilities, I think, that could lend itself to being a hub.
But it's not really the only hub. We have two. We have the border crossing as one hub, and on the west side, Flint-Bishop International Airport will be the other. What's interesting about that is Flint-Bishop is an airport that has significant capability to grow and expand. The wait times are real, I mean, most of you have probably used Flint before, so you know you can get in and out of that airport pretty quickly. So what they want to do is they want to create a logistics hub that's built around the airport in their area. Now, for us, that's not really competition because we have the Saint Clair County International Airport, which somewhat competes in that, but really is kind of a small player right now, but has great potential. So they're not going to be stealing our businesses, we're not going to be stealing theirs, but they're going to be a nice asset, just like the ports on our side are great assets that none of the other counties have.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
Dan, I think this is a good idea, but I do have to ask you a question. As you can liken this to a race, getting this designation, why are we just now hearing about it in the middle of the race?
Well, we had a summit a few months ago. Some of the council members and Mr. Brown attended that, so it's, we haven't been hiding this. I mean, it's been out there for a number of months. We've been actually working on this since the beginning of May to get to the point where we're at today, where we're submitting the interlocal agreements to communities for approval. So it's, you know, we would have liked to have gotten it on your agenda sooner, but with the election, it was, you know, timing wasn't great. So we delayed it.
Any other questions?
A question. Oakland County's a powerhouse, and there's one municipality, I'm not familiar with the county. Why only one out of Oakland County?
Yeah, good question. Oakland's been involved in the beginning, but they've been really kind of a small player. There's really two reasons. Number one, they don't border I-69, but of course, they border I-75. But they don't border I-69. So the main reason they were interested is because they have a lot of companies that use Flint to do their air freight. It's an important asset for the counties. Oakland doesn't really have another airport that really fulfills that function, that has the ability for expansion. So they wanted to do it to support the airport. And they picked one community, which is Pontiac, to participate. Pontiac makes sense for them because they have a lot of older buildings that need to be refurbished or torn down, but they have great multimodal assets there, rail lines, rail yards, M-59 and I-75. So that's the only community that they've really put forward for consideration.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.